11th, 2024. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have the reading of the minutes from the March 6, 2024 closed session. On March 6, 2024, at 8:59 PM, at City Hall, a motion to hold a closed meeting was made by Councilmember Tillman with a second by Mayor Pro Tim McCarron, carried 5-0. This was held in accordance with the Maryland Open Meetings Act, Title 10, Governmental Procedures, Subtitle 5, Meeting Section 3-305B. This meeting was closed in order to discuss, to consult with staff consultants and other individuals about pending or potential litigation. Topics discussed was proposed city attorney settlement agreement and release. The persons present were Mayor Miller, all council members, the city manager, and the clerk. The action taken was a 5-0 motion to accept the settlement agreement and release by McCarron, with a second by Foster, carried 5-0. Motion to adjourn at 9:32 PM by Fuller, with a second by Councilmember Foster, carried Next, we have the approval of the minutes of the February 7, 2024, February 12, 2024, regular meetings, and the February 12, 2024, and March 6, 2024, closed sessions. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
I move to approve those minutes.
Looking for a second?
I will second.
Any further discussion by council?
No, I think that was all.
Hearing none, looking for a... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carius? So we have Commissioner Vigliotti with us tonight, and we are about to head into a swearing in for Corporal Schultz on his promotion to sergeant tonight. So let's go ahead and head into that. Lower your right hand and repeat after me. I, Shane T. Schultz.
I, Shane T. Schultz.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And that I'll... And support the constitutional laws thereof?
And I will support the constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, for the best of my skill and judgment?
And I will, for the best of my skill and judgment?
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the position of sergeant for the City of Tawnytown Police Department?
Execute the position of sergeant for the City of Tawnytown.
According to the constitutional laws of this state?
According to the constitutional laws of this state.
Your sworn in. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going to have Sergeant Schultz right in his new sergeant's badge, just in case. I'm going to take this as all, okay? Can we turn around for the...
Perfect. All right, congratulations. Congratulations. You guys want to say for a picture with some of your councilmembers? Councilmembers, anybody who wants to come up for it? Congratulations. One back in the middle. You're the guest of honor here, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have councilmember's statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Hearing none, proceeding forward. Resolution ordinances and agreements. Up for adoption now, we have ordinance 04-2024, fiscal year 2023-2024, budget amendment 3. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
I move to approve the budget amendment, as shown.
Looking for a second?
I will second.
Any further discussion, comments, questions, concerns from council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. It carries. Next up, we have resolution 2024-04, water allocation for March. Looking for a motion in regards to that? Looking for a second? Any further comments, questions, discussion by council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. It carries. Resolution 2024-05, adoption of Carroll County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Motion to approve.
Looking for a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any further comments, questions, or concerns by council?
No, sir.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carius? City manager report?
Nothing additional, other than we do need to set a tentative date for our budget workshop. If you can try to keep the 27th, March 27th, so Wednesday, open, the last Wednesday of the month.
What time, Jim?
7:30.
Anything on departmental reports?
No.
Legal report?
No, I was just saying, nothing other than...
Nothing to add unless there are questions on the departmental reports.
Legal report?
Good evening, everybody. It is good to be back in my seat here, looking at you all. Thanks for the warm homecoming. I feel it is kind of a homecoming. I hope that the unpleasantness that we've had for the last few months can go away, and that I can now be part of the team again to help make the town move forward and progress forward. As you all know, I've been out of the loop for a couple months now. So what I want to invite each of you to do is that if there is anything that you think that I need to know about, that you want me to look into, we're compiling a list. So the city manager and I are meeting next week with this list to try to see where we left things and where we need to do things. Not necessarily a goals list, that'll probably come later, but at least a pending list of things that you might want to have talk about. So I do appreciate being able to work with you again, and I'm always a phone call away if you need anything. Thank you.
Could I ask the city manager, we have a list of pending ordinances, and there's a charter revision, I believe, outstanding?
Correct.
So I assume those will be at the top of the to-do list?
Maybe not the top, but...
Somewhere near the top, okay. And then I think council would like to have a report on any pending litigation, and where they... PFAS and any of the other outstanding issues. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns from council? Hearing none, proceeding forward to new business, monthly financial report. Looking for a motion regarding that?
Make a motion to approve the financial report.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carius, accounts payables, looking for a motion regarding that?
Motion to approve.
Looking for a second? All those... Are looking for questions, comments, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Main Street city code change. Did you need anything on this, Jim, or just a consensus on where we're going with it?
Just consensus, and if there is consensus to move forward, then we'll discuss the merits of it with the city attorney.
Council, was there any discussion you guys needed in regards to that?
No, I think that was, you know, the right idea. Everybody, I think, agreed to that.
Looks like you got a consensus, Jim. Approval of special event permit application, MWA Music in the Park, August 3, 2024?
Move to approve that application.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carius? Approval of police radio purchase?
Motion to approve.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Further comments, questions, concerns by council?
Just to comment that that was part of the...
Yeah, the budget.
Budget amendment was to cover the cost of the...
You didn't need a second one, right? Do you need a second motion with it or not?
Would like to go ahead and get this on...
Okay.
On record as an approval.
No, for the discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carius? Next up, we have Meads Crossing, Section 2A Surety Reduction. Looking for a motion on that?
I move to approve, as long as the letter is clear about not approving, not accepting the subdivision, given our... The sewer issues.
Looking for a second?
Tucker.
Did we get legal opinion on that before we...
We have not gotten legal opinion yet.
I mean, was that one of the reasons we wanted to just have that real quick? Not real quick, I mean, right now, but...
Would you like to defer, Jim?
We can approve it after he says it's over.
That's, I think, I would say, if we can make that contingent on city attorney's approval of the letter.
Okay.
My motion is...
Did you want to amend it?
Yeah, so I'll amend my motion that... So I move to approve the surety reduction, pending the legal sufficiency of the letter that does not absolve them of, you know, acceptance and the I and I issues. Is that close enough?
Looking for a second on the amended motion?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Carius, councilmember reports, starting at councilmember Tillman.
Good evening, everyone. So good to see everybody here tonight. So the planning commission has been fairly busy in the last month or so. We've approved a number of zoning certificates that have gone, that I assume are going forward to building permits. We had the... I believe we approved the preliminary and final approval for the plan for the AVAPCO expansion on their building. I believe we are still waiting for zoning approval on the parking lot across the street. And so that was a topic of discussion. We discussed the Memorial Park expansion. We had a preliminary site plan presented last year, and I believe they're working towards final on that. We didn't do anything with Recovery 180, I don't believe. And there are a number of small things still outstanding on a few construction projects that are finishing up, that we're trying to finish up paperwork on. Other than that, we did bring one of the discussions, topics of open discussion, was a fairly extensive list of questions that the planning commission has for council and also for the people of the City of Tawnytown. It was a very extensive list. I kind of read and summarized it during the workshop meeting last week. I'm not going to go through all that in the interest of time here this evening. If anybody wishes and wants to know what those questions were, they certainly can review the video of the meeting from last week. These things will be out and presented again. We're going to be working toward a new comprehensive plan, and in those discussions of moving towards this comprehensive plan, we hope to answer many of these questions. So your planning and zoning department is working hard and looking ahead to the future. So we appreciate anyone's comments. Everyone's always welcome to come the last Monday of the month to the planning commission meeting. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to say another congratulations to Sergeant Schultz, and thank him for all that he does. As far as the statistical report for the Tawnytown Police Department for February, there were 478 dispatched calls for service with 166 citations issued and 365 warnings issued. There were 31 adult arrests and one juvenile arrest during the month of February. Some great news coming from the department. We have three prospective candidates moving through the hiring process, which is amazing. So thank you, thank you, to the chief. And we are very hopeful to have these three candidates among our ranks in the very near future. It was a busy month with enforcement efforts during February. On two separate occasions, two stolen vehicles were recovered, and one of them was found to be stolen from Baltimore City. The department has also had an automated external defibrillator installed in their conference room area of the station, so that's good news. As far as training and education goes for the department, all active officers received active shooter training, phases and prevention, and preparation and response for schools. And they also received active shooter recognition and basic response training. Private First Class Eccles has received provisional academic general education instructor certification. And he also completed the basic instructor training program, which was 35 hours of training. And Haley Ingalls has completed the career wellness training. And that's it?
Mayor Pro Tim?
Good evening, everyone. It's good to report on the economic development activities in town. I visited with our development director, Meech, J. Meech. And Meech, again, he brought me up to date today. There's a lot going on, and I'm very proud of what's happened over the last 30 days. Of course, we've welcomed Bellicimos the last couple of weeks, and all reports are that they're very satisfied with the business that they've been able to generate. And I've talked to many people who find the addition a very welcome on East Baltimore Street. So we're glad to see Bellicimos with us. But other things are getting very close, too. We have a prospect looking at the... Little restaurant on the corner, Number 1 York Street, that's been vacant for 150 years or so. But that's getting very close. The individual appears to be ready to sign a contract, so cross your fingers. The other bit of retail news is that there's a new shop and plan for... No Anchovies, right next to No Anchovies, an ice cream shop, which is moving along through the process, the permitting process. So that's something that's happening also. AVAPCO has been granted a major expansion, or announced a major expansion, bringing another 215 new jobs to Tawnytown. This is a remarkable feat. This is so, so exciting. Just all news is good news. We... Well, I take that back. We are endeavoring to revive the downtown Main Street Advisory Group, and we've had some re-engagement problems, I suppose. But I talked to Meech a little bit about that the other day, and hopefully we can provide some leadership that will help us get back on track and get what we want to do. One of the neat things that the Main Street Advisory Group did, if you're ever down, if you're down to Westminster and go through the Peep Show, I know a lot of people like to go through that this time of year, you'll see that our Main Street group has prepared Tawnytown Main Street with little marshmallow chicks. So make sure you look that up if you happen to be wandering through there. That's a neat thing, a neat thing to do. Meech also spent some time in Annapolis advocating for both small business and small-town legislation that's going through the General Assembly right now. So I was very happy after my visit this month with Meech, looking forward for better things in the future. So we're seeing a lot of good things happening. It's just getting to come to fruition is the main thing, but well, we're on the way. There was a mention in his departmental report of a project, Restore 2.0. And this is a funding program that allows applicants to take advantage of pretty much turnkey funding for empty storefronts, or storefronts that have been empty for a number of... A number of... For a while. I don't know how, what the... Whether it's 90 days, or two years, or what. But anyway, empty storefronts are available for this funding. This has just been announced. And we don't have an abundance of empty storefronts that fit this category, maybe three or four. But based on the funds that are available, there's no reason in the world that we can't attract some businesses into these spaces and even have those new retail spaces to our downtown community. So we're very excited about that, and not only our downtown community, but our entire business community. We're thinking about the old Tower Motors, and we're thinking about various other spots around town that can take advantage of this. Meech has got these in his sights, and I'll be working with individuals to get these storefronts filled during this program, period. Has to be done by the end of June, so you don't got much time. So anyway, that's just kind of a sideline. But again, very positive outlook for economic development right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Foster?
Okay. Department of Public Works is continuing to work with the grant providers that they have to seek out funding wherever it's possible for the new building. Their grant provider has assured them that as they come across these possibilities, they will automatically put them in for it. So hopefully that will pan out to be something. I am a member of the Legislative Committee with MML. We meet weekly on Wednesdays to discuss different legislation. There are a couple that could benefit municipalities such as ours. One dealing with the wastewater treatment that I've discussed with our city manager, and we've decided that it could be beneficial. The Legislative Committee hasn't endorsed it. We are watching it because it's a little ambiguous as to what they're trying to do. But that's encouraging. Also, Councilman Tillman will like this. One, to appeal to SHA to reduce the speed limit of trucks going through the streets of municipalities.
The 25...
We did endorse that one.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that, and as someone who's...
Yes, I actually made that motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, Habitat for Humanity. Next week, the volunteers will be inside the houses, working. I don't know the schedule for after that, how they'll be working, but they'll be working right along. And I expect that by the end of summer, that the homes will be ready. There's, of course, via ribbon cutting that I will inform everybody about before it happens. Silver Oak Academy, I call it that, but it's actually not that anymore. But the board continues to meet under that name. We are working with the Department of Juvenile Services to revamp it into something else. But as you're very well aware, things move slowly through the state, so it will take some time. But we continue to meet every other month under the name of Silver Oak Academy. And that's it.
Councilmember Fuller?
All right, our first event, Easter egg hunt, is going to be Saturday, March 23, at Memorial Park, starting at 1 PM. They are going to have 4,000 candy and toy-filled eggs hidden throughout the park. There's going to be free juice and cookies, and lots of raffles for filled Easter baskets. And of course, the Easter Bunny will be there and available for pictures. The Memorial Tree Program kicked off last week. We've already had some people sign up. Many thanks to the Carroll County Times for their article about the program. Those interested in purchasing the tree and customized plaque should contact Lorena for details. We're still facing delays on final work at Ballinger Park. This weather has not been kind. They're working on bringing the security cameras online, and they're still shooting to finish and open by the end of this month, but it's all obviously weather-dependent. We've also received preliminary designs and pricing for our proposed Memorial Park splash pad. If you want to see more information about that, you can come on out to our Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, which is going to be this Wednesday, starting at 6:30 PM, following our Tawnytown Athletic Association meeting. She's got some great pictures and some great ideas that they've put together for us. And then we will have a few of... As councilmembers, Diane and I have done it for several years. We are going to be reading the Fourth Grade If I Were Mayor contest essays on Tuesday, March 19. We're hopefully looking for a winner from Tawnytown, but that has yet to happen. But these essays are definitely eye-opening. And finally, just welcome back, Jay. It's good to have you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fuller? Looking for...
Mayor, can I... I forgot two things. Can I add, councilmember? Real quickly, I did want to make mention of the fact that Wayne Chevrolet has celebrated 60 years anniversary in Tawnytown, March 1. We should congratulate them. Not only has Wayne Chevrolet been a part of this community for all those 60 years, they've been an active part of this community for over 60 years, involved in virtually every aspect of city life for as long as I've been here, and I've been here over 40 years. So I know for a fact that they've been great contributors to the success and the development and the way and the image of what Tawnytown is today. Additionally, we had Tony Stares celebrate 65 years in business last November. We had planned a celebration, but there were conflict arose, we couldn't get it done. But that's coming up, too. So I wanted to bring those two things to everybody's attention. You know, we talk about all the new businesses. We need to thank the businesses that have been pillars of our community for as long as any of us can remember. And one other additional thing is that we're planning to try to develop a monthly downtown event, or Main Street event, that would be modeled on Small Business Saturday, where we'll have some particular theme developed, where people can come, invite people to come down and shop and participate, go from store to store, and things of that nature. So that'll be more available, and that is things develop. But I apologize for missing that. Thank you, Mayor, for that.
All good. And just to touch on the Wayne Chevrolet, April 23, they're having their conjoined meeting between the Chamber of Commerce and Alliance Club. We're going to be presenting a proclamation for the 60th anniversary.
Yes, that's an event that'll be... There'll be information out about that, but that is a... There'll be information out about that, but that is a joint event with the Tawnytown Lions Club and the Tawnytown Chamber of Commerce.
Other than that, looking for a motion of adjournment?
Don't worry.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
I didn't speak into the mic.